We'll call the meeting to order. Misty, will you call the roll?
Hal Landville.
Here.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lucan.
Here.
Melissa Niles.
Here.
Travis Orbach. Larry Pratt.
Here.
Linda Varvel.
Here, sometimes.
Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor was not able to be with us tonight, so I'll be facilitating the meeting. Remind you, counsel, to excuse yourself from any agenda item that you feel that you have a conflict of interest with prior to voting on that item. With that said, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the May 20 council meeting?
I make a motion.
To approve.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 20 council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $121,099.99.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
Make a motion to approve the current claims in the amount of $633,449.32.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims?
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims of $18,234.28.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I know I asked you this, but maybe somebody can answer it for me. On item, on the back page, on page four, the Wentworth Schedule software, it was $125 before, how come it went up to 220?
That's the scheduling software the police department uses, and there was no indication of why it went up. I would just probably say inflation. The cost of things are going up. If you'd like me to ask, I'd be happy to, the police chief, if there was more services that are being offered, or if they changed the services provided with the software, but other than that, I have no answer for you at this time.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any communications from the public? Okay. Anybody? Is Tracy here?
He said he might, not that Tracy, the other one, he said he might be here about 7:30 or so, so I told him we'd just get him in when he came in.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, Tracy, I'm sorry, Tracy Bastian will be providing an update on the road project and sewer and water replacement. So, with that said, we have Tracy Hanson with Kettle, I'm gonna say it, Thorstensen for LLP for our 2023 audit review.
Hello again. Just to give an update on the results of the audit process, we met just prior to this meeting to go through the details, but a summary of that was to first start with a thank you to Misty and the finance officer for the assistance with the process, and then the overall results resulted in a clean or unmodified opinion, and that's the result that you want to receive as a part of the audit process. We talked through the highlights of the financials, statements themselves, and the notes, and the accounting standards, and all of those pieces. No major changes during 2023's audit process, and then as a part of that process, we also take a look at your internal controls, and if we have anything that we have suggestions on, we report those. There's two findings that are repeat findings, one related to financial statement preparation. We do that as a part of our audit process, we're not suggesting a change. We have very few clients that do that as a part of the audit process, and then the second one is audit adjustments, and again, we talk through the details of what that, those adjustments were, and the big one is the South Coast Retirement Pension adjustments, and again, that's just a consistent part of our process and not one that we're making a recommendation for a change. So overall, successful audit results for the city for December 31, 2023.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Counsel, any, you had a chance to grill Tracy in the preliminary meeting, any, any public questions or comments you'd like to ask her or comment to her?
I have a comment I want to go on record about our finance department with Misty and Ariel. Doing an excellent job that you've done, this is the sixth one that I have been through, and we have not faltered once, and it's kudos go to you guys, so thank you for your job, well done.
Thank you. You have a great evening.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, moving on to personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve personnel action items A through G?
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through G.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to new business item A. This is a discussion only, it's a request from Dwayne Whitney requesting allowance at 1705 University to operate a self-storage facility at that location, which is currently disallowed by Title 15, Chapter 155.024D6. Dwayne, are you here?
Yeah.
And just a reminder, counsel, that Misty has provided the information that Dwayne has sent out. This is a discussion-only item, so no action will be taken. If you have questions for clarification for Dwayne, you're free to ask him after he's made a, which I would ask would be a short presentation since counsel does have this information, so Dwayne, go ahead and...
Okay, first off, thank you all because you're doing a thankless task. I very much appreciate what you guys are trying to do for the city and keep it moving in a, you know, positive direction. Am I talking loud enough? I wear a hearing aid, so it's, sometimes it's really tough for me to tell how loud I'm talking.
Might put the mic up a little bit. There you go.
Okay. So if you guys have all seen the packet that Ariel was good enough to ship out to everybody, maybe the better way to do this is, do you have any questions for me versus reiterating what is in there? Because, well, wife and I are really looking to do is provide something for the community that is a little different and unique, because there really is no secure storage in Hot Springs. And you can see, and I, I want to apologize, I do the CAD programming that I've got, does not have full access to anything and everything that's put in there, so like some of that presentation that you saw, I put a fence as what is essentially the perimeter of the property, the property line, instead of what it truly is, but that's what that, that is referencing as. And then, to put the, the security gates that are gonna be into this thing are gonna be decorative, but the Japanese version you see is the only thing that I could actually kind of come up with that made any sense. So, the idea for this is, as you, I'm sure have seen, I have redone the exterior of that 1705 building, what used to be where the vet was on University Avenue, and that would be a continuation of what I'm hoping to do for, you know, additional space up to the 40% that's allowed by the city, with the idea that there's no windows. Windows are a weak point, and we're trying to make this a truly state-of-the-art, secure storage facility for people, and businesses, quite frankly. The review that we have done show that there is truly a need. All you gotta do is go to Facebook to find out that what is in town is not working for people, not for something that you truly want to be secure, and this is going to be a truly high-tech thing, that somebody comes in there, you're gonna know exactly who it is. There's no other way around it. We will know each and every person that came in there, how long they were in there, what they accessed, what they didn't. So, if there is a problem, when it comes time to police, they will have a really good response, because I will have every single bit of information for every single person that stepped foot onto that property and when they did it. And the idea that we're trying to come across with this is, like right now, we have glass doors in the building. We will not have that. They will be secure doors. There will be no way to see into any of this. What you would see going by would, would be what I would argue is a very classy, nice-looking facility. It's not going to look like a typical cheap steel storage building facility. That's not what we are shooting for, we're shooting for something that is gonna be, like I said, climate-controlled. Somebody's got a 200-year-old desk, you don't want the glue to go out in, you're not gonna go stick it out in an outside storage facility, because you're not gonna have it when you're done. Same thing with records. I mean, that's truly one of the things that we are really seeing a need for, that we've been approached about, and that is one thing that we can totally achieve by doing something like this, so... I know we're trying to help businesses and it's mixed use up where that building is, but I just truly believe that that would be a benefit to the city, the people in the area, because it's not gonna be a high-traffic thing, it's not gonna look like, quite frankly, the gas stations that are up there, it's actually gonna look classy. It's not gonna be an eyesore, it's not going to impede on the people that are on the other side of the alley where you go to basically house. And, I guess I, I also put a letter in there from one of our tenants that we have at 112 Chicago, to just give you an idea, my wife and I are in this for the long haul, we're not in this for the short haul. So, I only like to do good work, that building was in, quite frankly, pretty tough shape for the 1900 section in the front. Scott's seen what I can do, and he's seen what we do do. I'm very much a proponent of high-tech materials and good solutions for them. I do not want to see something that looks like trash. I want something that's gonna look good.
Yeah, I guess, one, one question I'd have for you, Dwayne, is, would your business plan allow for your facility to work without the auxiliary buildings outside of the main structure?
You mean as far as the second building that we're talking about proposing to add to the backside of the property?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could, you easily could do it from the existing building that's there, or, you know, yeah, there's all kinds of options there.
You, you could do an indoor, climate-controlled storage facility and make it work without putting additional storage buildings separate from your main structure?
Sure you could, but the question would be, why would it not, if that was the case, why would the original building that's there not get made bigger? Not go out towards the 40% that is allowed on the, on the lot, would be my question. But could it be done? The answer is yes.
Okay.
It would still be considered a self-storage facility?
You're... Yes, because the person would be, you would have the ability to bring your items to it, so in terms of the definition of self-storage, yes.
Thank you.
It would still be seen as that, yes, by definition.
Okay, thank you, that, that helped, that helped clarify some questions I had, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions?
This would require a total ordinance revision to allow this?
The ordinance does specifically use, specifically state that use as not permitted.
Correct. So what would be required for that to happen, if that was the direction everyone wanted to go?
A change to the zoning ordinance is first heard at PNZ, and there would be a public hearing required for the requested change, and then also heard at a public hearing at council.
Have you talked to your neighbors of that building?
Only the ones behind us, because quite frankly, I've had that building rented to the vet business before from the time we bought it, so I really have not spent much time there, other than what we were basically just there doing the maintenance that you, you know, that I'd recently done to the building. So, though I have not talked to the neighbors specifically.
Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, Dwayne.
Yeah, no, I've actually done this process in other communities that we've been in with, excuse me, with trying to give revisions for things, and I'm, quite frankly, I'm not afraid of that process. If you guys can see your way to see a benefit in it, I did it in Edgemont. I bought the old Fall River County Hospital, and we had to, you know, convert it from commercial to residential. And, you know, that's just one example. Did that in Idaho for a number of properties, and this is our home, so we, I just see this as being a viable thing without putting a lot of impact into the area. I would be willing to bet that the traffic, if you will, which would be basically personal vehicles, not large moving trucks or something like that, would probably be less than what you typically saw for the customers that were going to the vet building when it was there, or the grocery store before that.
How many units would it have?
Excuse me?
How many units would be there?
Uh, that's really up in the air, because a lot of the research that we're really coming up with is showing that what a lot of these customers really want is actually what would be like a half of a, a bedroom closet, like a five-by-five. What we're really looking at doing is, the, the process I'm gonna build this is, you know, we get approved for it, is truly modular, in that if we get a need or a request and we need to make these four feet wider, because it's all gonna be done on four-foot increments, then it's very easy to do. The, I've had some really interesting discussions. My daughter runs a huge storage business, they own 22 different properties in the state of Washington, and she's the one that got me hooked on this technology that's out there now to try this, and they have over 200 units that are less than four-by-four, because people want to be able to secure their documents and things like that in a, in her, in their case, it's fireproof building. So, and we're gonna basically try to get that same standard ourselves.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business item B. Can I get a motion to accept the 2023 financial statement and audit report prepared by Kettle Thorstensen?
I make a motion to accept the 2023 financial statements and audit report prepared and presented by Kettle Thorstensen.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, can I get a motion to approve the construction contract 2024-10 between the City of Hot Springs and Competitive Masonry?
I'll make a motion to approve the construction contract 2024-10 between the City of Hot Springs and Competitive Masonry for the 2024 flood wall repair project at a total project cost of $24,021 to be completed on or before November 1st of 2024.
Second.
Discussion? And what this project does is, this does all of the flood wall repair that the called for by the Army Corps of Engineers inspection report, that has actually been called for in the last several reports, so this is a real positive thing for the city, shows that we're actually listening to what they've been asking us to do. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business item D, can I get a motion to approve built-right roofing to complete necessary roof repairs at the library and Southern Hills Golf Course Clubhouse?
I make a motion to approve built-right roofing to complete the necessary roof repairs at the Hot Springs Public Library for $6,513, and the Southern Hills Golf Course Clubhouse for $2,045.75. Damage caused by the 7/17/23 hailstorm, with funds provided by SDPAA. Insurance claim proceeds, claim number GC2023115933.
Second. Any discussion?
This, Bill, so the new hail damage, there were still some things that the old roofing crew kind of screwed up on the roof, is this gonna include that also?
I believe it does.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business item E, can I get a motion to approve built-right roofing to replace gutters and downspouts on the library and Southern Hills Golf Course Clubhouse?
I make, oh, go ahead. I make a motion to approve built-right roofing to replace gutters and downspouts at the Hot Springs Public Library for $9,902.88, and the Southern Hills Golf Course Clubhouse for $4,811.52. Damage caused by June 13th of '22's hailstorm, with funds provided by the SDPAA. Insurance claim proceeds from claim number GC2022111390.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, on the downspouts, we're gonna make sure that they're set perfect, so they don't go back and damage the foundation around the buildings. Hopefully, hopefully. Thank you, sir.
And, I think originally, when the roofs were originally repaired, the downspouts were not installed, so this takes care of that, that installation from the, as stated here, from the 2022 damage.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve straight-line striping to paint parking lines, curbs, crosswalks, and handicap placards?
I make a motion to approve straight-line striping to paint parking lines, curbs, crosswalks, and handicap placards at the following locations. River Street from Jennings to Albany, $1,333.83. Mueller Civic Center, $1,347.75. Hot Springs Public Library for $897.36. And Evans Plunge Mineral Springs for $1,553.30, funded with the current budget authority.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, on some of, to, to me, on some of the handicap striping over there, I talked to the city administrator, and he's gonna, I guess he talked to, I think I talked to Billy too. There's, some of that needs to be re-looked at, as far as having access to where they can park at, as far as buses coming in, vans coming in, things like that. So, that, that's not set in stone, but I just want to bring that up to light.
Is that additional to what we have here, you're talking, or?
No, I think some of them need to be removed. It would have to be something that maybe you and I and Bill could go over there, the city administrator, and take a look at this, and I, and just point out, you know, what, for what purpose.
If it's necessary.
If it's necessary, yes.
Is it the Evans and here?
No, it's at the library.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. But all that's within the, the cost here, and the city administrator has talked with each one of these department heads, and they looked at their budgets, and they think that they can cover this work within their existing 2024 approved budgets. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve rosane construction and dust control to apply mag water to the following road locations? Valley View, Sixth Street, 1200 Estate, South Garden Street, and Eli's, says Eli Street, but I believe that's Eli Avenue?
I make a motion to approve rosane construction and dust control to apply mag water to the following gravel roads. Valley View, Sixth Street, 1200 Estate, South Garden Street, and Eli Street in the amount of $6,944.89. This unbudgeted expense to be funded by a future supplemental appropriation to the general fund, highway, streets, and roadways, streetwalk repairs, maintenance budget 101-43120-42540.
Second.
Discussion?
Now, these streets is, are, is this gonna be a start, or are we starting a trend to do this at other alleys and things like that? It's just, just a start to get our roads to looking better?
This, this was, this has been discussed in Public Works twice now, we've discussed it, it was then discussed in Admin Finance, and they kicked it back to Public Works. These, these areas, it, it, I don't know if it'll grow or not, Larry. The mag water not only keeps dust down, but it also reduces the amount of road maintenance needed on those roads. We did Garden Street last year, and it, under some pretty heavy traffic conditions, it kept that road in better shape than it had been in a long time. And so, in, in lieu of paving, which we don't have the budget for, these are our roadways that we felt needed to have the mag water put on to keep, not only keep the dust down for not only the, the residents in that area, but also, like you, on Garden Street for the, the users of Brookside Park, as well as the Brookside residents. What we'll probably see in budgets, site, or budget reviews going forward is an annual mag water budget. We haven't done that in years past, but in, in lieu of, of an extended paving budget, mag water is, certainly seems to be a good method of, of maintaining our roads, it's consistent with our comprehensive plan on regarding streets and, and roads, so it, it may be a, a growing, as, as we see more and more need, it, the, the use of it may grow.
Because I know in Ward 1, there's a few places, Ward 1, there's a few places that could use it also, so I don't know about everybody else's wards, but, you know, what, as far as financially, Misty, what is your thoughts? I mean, the future, are we gonna be okay or not okay?
It's a temporary fix to a long-term problem, and financially, it's quite expensive for the minimal amounts getting a benefit from it.
I was under, the understanding that when we did Garden Street, it was simply because of the construction, because if...
Because if we start doing this to the gravel roads, it's a, it's a can of worms.
Say again? What was that last?
Oh, it's a, it's a, we would be opening up ourselves to a bigger project.
The benefit of Garden Street really helped the park as well, because there was a lot of dust infringing on the park and the users of the park, so that's a citywide improvement. Other than, you know, it has become thoroughfare because of the construction as well. But the park, usage of the park is improved greatly, not having that whole corridor being a big dust storm.
I just think that we need to keep an eye on the budget and make sure that as time progresses, because there's going to be other things that come up, we still got things that we got to pay off right now, so that's just my thoughts.
I concur that this was a short-term relief to those areas that are gravel road or dirt roads. I've lived on one for quite a number of years, dusting every day, and that is no fun. Don't like it, don't want it, won't live on one anymore. So we need to come up with a plan if we're going to, through Public Works, if we're, we can't continue to do this and then keep adding to it. So we need to see what we can do to fix our problems that we have now that are dirt roads instead of just a quick fix with mag water. I am for this for this time being, but I would not be for this as a long-term solve.
And I was told by construction, a construction company, that mag water, when it's wet, is somewhat corrosive to vehicles. So if it's on a road that's, where you're getting a lot of rain, when you're driving on it, it can get on your vehicle and be corrosive, because it is magnesium.
So I guess on, on one of these areas, the, the area that goes through 1200 Trailer Estates, is that a city road or is it privately owned?
It's city road, that's South Sixth Street.
Okay.
Misty, would you call the roll?
JR Hutelston?
Yes, short-term fix, yes.
Hal Glanville?
Yes, short-term.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Melissa Niles?
No.
Larry Pratt?
No.
Linda Varbell?
No.
You have four yeses and three nos.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir.
For discussion?
Councilman Lukens? I would like to point out that Tracy has arrived.
Sure. No sense getting comfortable.
Stand up, sir, don't get relaxed.
Well, let's see, are we on?
You're on.
Okay. Lots of things happening in the last month on the road project. I've noticed the, today, they're doing the, some of the bump outs, the pedestrian access crossings on North River Street north of Minnacatah, so those pieces of the puzzle are really coming together. The sewer line installation on North River Street is almost done. They don't have very far to go now at all. And actually, as far as the utilities are concerned, we only have the water main left on Battle Mountain. So rather nice that we're seeing the end of this very large project coming together. So it's good to see that. And, you know, I was concerned, maybe up in this north area of town, you know, really from the Evans on north, that they might run into a lot of surprises, and it's really not been that bad. I think we had more surprises actually on North River Street, south of Minnacatah, or, yeah, more in the, you know, the area there, City Hall and on north that way, which is where they ran into that flume for the old power station, which we knew it was somewhere, and of course, it was found. So, so overall, the project has been going well. There's really not been too many hiccups in the last few weeks, and I would say, just looking at how things are going with the utilities as far along as they are, I think they're, I'm honestly going to say publicly, I think that their objective to be done by the end of the year looks very realistic. So I can't promise for them, but I think it looks very realistic. Suspended sidewalk, there's something going on usually every day, a lot of small detail work. They had to make some adjustments in that first section to actually compensate for the fact that the flood wall itself is not really that straight. I really never noticed that the flood wall is not that straight until now, when we're putting something that we're trying to make straight on top of it. And so they've, they've had to make some adjustments. They've, they've learned a lot in the first section that they've set up the towers. The word that we have received is it will probably go quicker, you know, as they move on north. So that's pretty much the update on the suspended sidewalk, and that's pretty much where we're at, just a lot of things going on. I mean, a lot of people, every day, there's concrete being poured, there's pipe being laid, and of course, you know, the dry weather is helping them, but, so we'll see how that all goes, but I'd say it's going very well. So any questions?
Yeah, suspended sidewalk, on all the beams and in the penetrations in the back of it going into the ground, is there going to be a covering over those bolts and nuts?
Oh, yeah.
What are they going to put on top of that concrete?
The bottom part, I think it's up about four feet of, of all of those upright towers, will actually have a rock, a decorative rock covering, I guess if you will. So they'll actually, that'll be totally covered, yeah.
And in the fut, and in future, will they come back and do inspections on those bolts to make sure that they're watertight, they're okay, they're not coming loose or anything?
That'll be part of, that will have to be done before that finishing work is done, which our consultant will be out here at various times conducting his inspections. Yeah, because once it's sealed up, those bolts will pretty much be hidden.
Are they locking nuts? What are they?
I think they're, they're just big nuts with washers. I don't think they're a lock washer.
Okay.
But that's a good question, keep it in mind.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No?
We've had some calls at the city about the road project specifically in front of the courthouse and the confusion with the signage, so we referred them to...
Oh, the signals and, we, I think that'll be the topic at our weekly meeting tomorrow morning. I know today, I think two different times going through there, light was green, and there's still people coming from, you know, the other directions, so I don't know whether people are jumping the light. I know that happens, some, they get impatient, they just decide to go anyway, but some of it may be just the amount of time that the light is red and green, and they might need to adjust that a little bit.
Well, I know when I went up Summit, I looked over there and I saw that the light was red, but there was people coming from the north going through the red light.
Yeah. I think that's happening quite a bit.
Yeah.
And I actually, one time, had someone on the, well, the section going north past Minnacatah, where you have two very large do not enter signs. And it was night, and a person was coming right at me, and they expected me to get out of the way, so I did. It wasn't worth having an argument over it, but I'm thinking, those signs are pretty big.
When you're in a big vehicle, like a bus, you cannot back up.
No. Well, it wasn't a big vehicle, but, but yes, you're right. I mean, if somebody comes at you and you're driving a bus...
I've had that happen to me a couple of times.
And they jump the light, yeah. Yeah, so that, that is concern that we'll bring up to the traffic control people at the meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, we'll move on to New Business Item H. A motion to approve a plat of lot S-2R and lot S-1R. If you remember last meeting, we had this on the agenda, and there was a note that had not been placed on the plat regarding the utility easement, and I think that note and easement has been placed back on that plat, so if I can get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a plat of lot 2SR and lot S1R, or I got lot S2R and lot S1R located in the southeast quarter of Section 23, T76, R5E, BHM. City of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly lot S1, lot S2, and tract C.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New Business Item I. A motion to appoint Mike Summer to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term, 2024 through 2026.
Make a motion to appoint Mike Summer to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term, 2024 through 2026.
Second.
Discussion? Mike?
He's here. We want to really appreciate you willing to come back, and we've been in need of more participants.
Anything you'd like to say, Mike?
As the Chair for Save Our Sandstone, looking forward to getting back on historic preservation and using those two groups to work together, as we have board members that overlap between both of them. And we'll keep moving on our QR code project for the buildings through Save Our Sandstone. We've got about half of the 36 or 37 sandstones that are written up in long form for the website, for our website, and then we have to shorten them up, a five or six sentence description of the building that will go in storefront windows with QR codes so people can walk through town through their own self-guided tour. And it's been a lot longer project than we anticipated, but it'll be pretty neat when it's done. And I know with historic preservation, you know, the issues with deadbeat building owners that don't want to do anything to preserve, much less rehabilitate these structures, we all have the same concerns, so looking forward to being part of historic preservation again. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, sir.
Mike?
Yes?
What are the concerns for you fixing your building up?
Mine?
Yeah.
I had a, colors picked out last year, and went through historic preservation with those to repaint the front and get rid of the multi-color activity there, replace some wood. I just signed up for the storefront pageant through the chamber, which I think is your next item agenda. And my plan is, this summer is to repaint the front of that building.
What about that outside wall?
The north wall?
Yeah.
At some point, that whole thing needs to be pointed. There's a lot of corrosion, but that is not the exterior wall of my building. There's actually two walls there.
It's a little bit left from the demolished West Oak building?
So what you see is actually what's left from the West Oak building.
Okay, so who's going to take care of that?
So my wall is, as far as structurally, is totally fine, because there's about...
So you fixed the leaks inside of the building?
Yeah, there's no more leaks. So when the West Oak was taken down, that pretty much solved any, any issues to the roof on my building.
Okay, well, I'm talking about the door and the gutter you put up.
Oh, the hole there?
Yeah.
That's also a project. I need to pour, pour footing and fill it with block, I think, and then face it with sandstone, the pile that was left there.
Right.
So it's going to be a busy summer.
Okay. Just remember, when you're on this commission that you're going to be on, just like us, we have to stand by the ordinances, just like you're going to have to stand by the ordinances for your building too, okay?
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else?
Any other questions for Mike, counsel?
All right.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
New Business Item J. Motion to approve $2,000 sponsorship of the 2024 storefront pageant promotion to be hosted by the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce and funded by future contingency transfer. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve $2,000 sponsorship of the 2024 storefront pageant promotion to be hosted by the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce and funded by future contingency transfer.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, we already give the chamber money, they want $2,000 more. My thoughts are, they want to do this when the road project is complete and it's done, my understanding. We still have to go to budget, is that my understanding?
They're looking for it for both this year and 2025.
Okay.
So that they can encourage everyone who's interested in doing improvements to have them done by the end of the...
Now, is that going to include all the buildings in the historic district or...
Every business can participate if they like.
That business is going to step up?
Correct.
Okay.
They have some great incentives and prizes.
We discussed this thoroughly at Finance Committee and opened it up to all businesses, not just chamber businesses, so all businesses have the opportunity as well.
Home businesses?
Pardon me?
Home businesses?
Storefronts.
Storefronts.
We didn't get anything for the package, so I was just looking for more details.
What, what, what level of increased, is there somebody from the chamber here to, to discuss this?
I don't know.
Come on down.
Will you introduce yourself to people not familiar with you? Please, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Alicia Kropinski. I'm the Vice President of the Chamber, and your question?
Yeah. What level of increased sales do the, is expected from this pageant?
Increased sales as far as...
Yeah, what do the businesses expect to gain from the pageant?
Well, I would think they're hoping to gain, you know, just a fun way, an incentive way to make their business look, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
You know, to make their business look a little better from the outside, more inviting to people coming by, and just to come together as a community to make Hot Springs, you know, look the best that it can.
There are a few businesses in town that are offering some matching funding. Is that the kind of incentive you're looking for, and then the prizes that can be awarded to the winners?
Yeah, I can give you those details as far as what businesses themselves are looking for as an increase. That's kind of an individual question for a business, you know, as far as, you know, changing season floral, I just picked that off the top of my head, but if they decided to go with that, you know, to participate, I guess I can't answer for them what they're expecting to...
Well, I guess, has that even been talked about by the chamber? Is this, and it's going to sound, I don't know if this is going to sound bad, but is there a return on... there a return on investment expected from this? Is it, we've had a hard time and this is going to make us feel good? Or do we think we're going to draw enough people in that if we invest $2,000, do we expect that there will be an additional $100,000 in sales generated because the windows look nicer?
Sure, I don't think we can, you know, come up with a number for that, but, you know, it's always the hope that if you invest in your own property, that that's going to help draw people. I guess myself as a business owner, I want my, outside of my property to look the best that it can in hopes that I draw more people to my business, right?
And when, what's the, when does this period start?
Yeah, so this pageant will run from June all the way through October of 2024. And then, like it was brought up, we would like to run it in 2025 because obviously construction isn't done all the way through. But we would like to get a first group of businesses started, so they're through the project. And then those who maybe aren't done with the construction in front of their businesses can participate next year. There is incentive from two businesses in town. Builders First Source and Ace Hardware are going to give the first 10 participants to sign up $100 to use at their stores to purchase paint, lumber, anything like that. And then prizes that we're wanting to pay out, obviously this, after the October 31st, we'll have a group of, our hope is to get somebody from every sponsorship on a team to go around and vote, so a little bipartisan. And prizes we're paying out to the top seven winners. So first prize is $1,500. Second prize is $1,000. Third is 750. Fourth is 500. Fifth is 300. Sixth is 200. And the seventh prize is $150.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just think it, all the trials and tribulations that this town has been going through in the last two and a half years, this is a project to help promote cohesiveness, increase our emotional well-being. I think it's, it's a boost to the city's morale. And, and if you drive, I've been driving down the southern part of the construction and it is looking so pretty. I came down Sunday and it was like empty. There was nobody there but me. And it was all clean and the lines were done and the pods were replanted and it's just beautiful. And, and it's going to all be beautiful, but I think this is kind of a shot in the arm to help, you know, get us through the tail end of it and to celebrate the end of it.
And we would agree, we're very excited as a chamber to put this event on and, and in hopes that that excitement, you know, transfers through the whole city. So, yes, we would appreciate your support.
And we were involved in this once before.
We were, yeah, I believe back in 2015 if I'm not mistaken.
And '17.
And '17?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think it's a, it's, it's a positive way for us as a city to tell our storefront businesses, look, we understand what you've been through. We understand what you're going through. This is just a little token from us to say thank you and let's charge on and we appreciate your businesses.
Agreed, thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to make sure once again that we've still got bills out there we got to pay. It's only $2,000, I get that, don't get me wrong, but as a city, we still have obligations to bills that we've got to take care of first. You know, my comment would be, yes, you're going to do this from June up to whenever. Right now, you can't hit budget time this year, but next year, maybe you can hit budget time to come to us and have a conversation. Maybe, maybe not, I don't, that's just my thoughts, Misty.
We do have it in our budget notes to discuss in 2025 and what you're being asked for tonight is to approve it as a contingency transfer that's already budgeted authority.
So it's already budgeted?
Contingency is budgeted. You only have so much for the year. You've spent about $35,000. You have $75,000 budgeted. That leaves you $40,000 for the rest of the year. So you're not dipping into any reserves by approving this, you're just approving a contingency transfer.
So we're going to be okay, is what you're saying? Yeah, I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I won't promise you'll be okay, but you have budget authority to approve this today if you choose to.
Okay. Thanks, Misty.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions, counsel?
Great discussion.
And, yeah, I mean, we've had some good discussions tonight and when we talk about unexpected money, we ought to, we ought to have the discussion, so thank you.
I think we should also budget to participate next year with some of our own facilities.
I'm just, I'm just, one of the things that I'm bringing up is one of the discussions that we had in the past and everybody here had the same thought process and I'm not going against what the chamber wants to do here, but it was brought up at one time that we need to think about what we're doing because we can't say yes to every good idea that comes up and pops up in front of the council here because if we do that, we're going to be out of money. And we've been doing pretty good so far. So that's just my thoughts with it.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel, for the discussion. Uh, can I get a motion to set a public hearing?
Make a motion to set a public hearing on June 17th, 2024 at 7:10 PM on the special sale alcoholic beverage license application from the Hot Springs Elks Club for the Arts and Crafts Festival on 6/28 through 30, 2024 at the Centennial Park, 275 North Garden Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that takes us to committee reports. Admin Finance, JR, Melissa?
Admin Finance will meet Monday, the 10th, 1 PM here at the Mueller Civic Center.
Okay, thank you. Airport Advisory will meet this Thursday, June 6th, 8:30 AM at the airport and, yep. Not sure Travis isn't here. I'm not sure when Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management meeting is. I didn't see it on the...
I have their next meeting. He mentioned it at the last meeting that they missed their May meeting, so they were going to have it on the 6th of June, 7 PM at the South Annex Building. And then they may pick back up in July because usually they only meet two months, but because they missed the May meeting, they're going to have one June 6th. And then we weren't sure, more to come on the July meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You said 6 PM?
7 PM?
Art 7, 7 PM? Okay.
Historic Preservation Commission, Deborah?
They will be meeting this Wednesday, the 5th, 5 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
They will be meeting June 13th, 2024 at noon at the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs.
Thank you. Parks Recreation, Beautification and Cultural Development, Larry?
I won't be able to make that meeting, but Linda, what time will it be?
It will be at 2 PM, June 5th, 2024, at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you, Jen, Linda.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission, Deborah?
It will be meeting the fourth Wednesday, since the third Wednesday is a holiday. We'll be meeting the 26th at 6 PM, City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, JR?
Public Safety meets this Thursday, the 6th at 2 PM here at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Okay, the, the rain is over. I do have a Public Works report.
Will Public Safety be finding out about that grant that you mentioned a few council meetings ago for overtime for saturation patrols? Will you guys be discussing that at your Public Safety?
We can, I didn't, yeah.
I, I will now.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Public Works met Tuesday, May 28th, 1 PM at the Civic Center Conference Room. Present were Hal Glanville, Deborah Johnson, myself, Mayor Nelson, City Administrator Bob Nelson Jr., Public Works Engineer Tracy Bastian, Wastewater Department Foreman Jason Correll. Members of the public present were Tim Tesher, Tom Fisk, Darian Wannau and Kerry Pyle. Under Communications from the public, Councilmember Deborah Johnson read a Hot Springs Community Garden Spring of 2024 update prepared by Kerry Pyle. Bottom line, the, the community garden up there on Evans Street is being fully utilized. There's a lot of stuff going on up there. Under Old Business, the youth garden proposal was discussed. Library Board has reviewed the proposal and voted to approve it. The cost to provide water to the northeast corner of the proposed garden via a one-inch line would cost about $2,500. A one and a half inch service would cost approximately $4,500. The one-inch line, given the available pressure, would provide about 30 gallons a minute, which would adequately supply three hydrants operating simultaneously. If approved, the tap point would be off of the fire hydrant supply line, which would allow all work to be done without disturbing any pavement. Given the cost of providing the water service, additional discussion and identification of funding sources needed before the proposal will be brought before council. Discussion of the 20, or 2002 624 H skid loader replacement. The committee discussed the lease and purchase information provided, as well as the need to understand the urgency of the replacement. More information is requested from the Streets Department and this discussion will continue at future meetings. There was no update on the Valley View Drainage Assessment District discussion. We reviewed the quotes for the flood wall repairs and you approved those, that contract tonight. We also discussed the Magwater proposal, which you approved. We discussed the 308 metal arc driveway repairs. The committee reviewed the request and agrees to conform to the counsel of the insurance provider. We reviewed the library pro shop roof, library and pro shop roof and gutter updates and you approved those actions tonight. Under New Business, we reviewed the quotes for the parking line activity from straight line striping and you approved that action tonight. We discussed an offer from Steve Shimonik to donate the waterfall at the intersection of the highway, of Highway 18 and Highway 71 to the city. The committee discussed and recommends that the city decline the offer. We talked about the culverts, borings at South 6th Street, the dip bridge and also the Joplin Avenue Bridge. The culverts at South 6th Street are about two-thirds full of mineral deposits. The Public Works Engineer recommends preparing an RFP for the project. The committee agrees that an RFP should be prepared so that bids will be available for the 2025 budget hearings. We talked about clean out of the sediments at the swimming hole at the Brookside Park. The city administrator will work with the Streets and Maintenance Department to address the issue, that we believe that work can be done in-house. We discussed the feasibility of staining the new pro shop retaining wall. The staining of that wall was in the original RFP but was pulled out, so staining will be pursued by the Gulf Corps Superintendent. Talked about respiratory protection purchase at the wastewater treatment facility. The foreman there is working on a grant for airline respirators and that equipment has been identified. The committee held preliminary discussions regarding a residence that had previously requested irrigation water only with no sewage system usage. The current circumstances will be discussed with the property manager and brought back to committee in June. Under departmental summaries, code enforcement warning and violation letters have been sent out by code enforcement specialists in mid-May. For the Water Department, the control system at the Hot Brook Pumping Station has been damaged by lightning. The hardwiring system will be replaced with the radial controlled system. The station is currently being operated manually. At the Wastewater Department, an aerator has been ordered for the secondary clarifier. This, along with the enzymes being added to the waste stream, should significantly help the nuisance odor issues. The Public Works Engineer had no additional updates. Under Streets, street repair locations and associated volumes have been acquired and are awaiting quotes. Streets will be performing small ADA projects at the Vision Source, Massedentle and the north end of the Centennial Parking Lot. The active and inactive project information have been updated and can be found on the Project Public Works Report on the city website. Meeting adjourned at 3:06 PM. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June 25th at 1 PM at the Mueller Center Conference Room. Any questions for Hal?
I just have a couple of questions. The youth garden proposal, the estimates that you relayed, 2,500 or 4,500, it sounds like you were leaning towards the smaller of the two?
Yes.
The one-inch line? And then is that work going to be done in-house or is that something that will be contracted out?
That'll be done in-house. So that $2,500 is essentially materials.
Okay. And then my second question, the equipment that was identified for the respirator grant, I have a contact at Workers Comp who provides the grant and he said when we identified the equipment, please send it to him before we apply so he can ensure that it meets the requirements.
Okay.
So if you could share that with me, then we can make sure that we have a positive grant experience.
Okay.
Thank you.
We like positive grant experiences.
We do, that goes a lot.
2,500 was just for material.
Thank you. Thank you.
With the handicap entries that we're going to be working on, did you include the ones connecting the sidewalks between Vision Source and Brookside?
Yeah.
So the one you said at Vision Source, that was connecting Vision Source and Brookside?
If I missed it, did you mention cleanup week?
No, it starts today.
Yes.
Cleanup week. And they were busy.
I went in at, at 9:15 and I was the 23rd vehicle.
It, it was a long line today.
Yeah, I think they were up to number 79 when I went.
Clean it up, folks, clean it up, good.
Yep. Be patient with those workers too, please.
They did a great job.
That's a lot.
Okay, the mayor's not here, but the next Gulf Course Advisory Meeting is Monday, June 10th, 6 PM at the Pro Shop. No city administrator report. Misty, do you have a finance officer report?
I do. You have your standard monthly reports, which include the year-to-date profit and loss summary report, your fund summary report, your cash balance reports and your investment reports. Those are through the 30th of May. Due to timing, I wasn't able to capture the last day. I guess I think I've pointed out to most of you who have asked me that I've never seen the profit-loss summary by fund have so much red this time of year after our first property tax payment from the county, but we know why we're here. We're, in total for the city, our loss so far this year is about $700,000, but it has a lot to do with... has a lot to do with the very big projects that we have going on. If you have any questions or concerns when you review these specific to any funds or any of the reports, please don't hesitate to ask. We did receive our first half of the property tax payments, delinquent property tax payments and special assessments from the county. That deposit did help boost the year-to-date balance in the general fund. I'd also like to report that our 2024 municipal sales tax collection in total is up 12% year-to-date from this time last year, so that's positive. Um, I have a summary of the audit report. Thank you for coming, those of you that came early to listen. I know it's a lot of numbers and the report, I think 50 pages in the audit report. It's a lot to absorb, but it's an important document and it summarizes the position of the city and it's important that you understand that. So if you have any questions, well, you had an opportunity to ask Tracy and Ariel and I are always available to answer those as well. Tomorrow's Election Day, so if you haven't voted early, please be sure that you get out and vote. Polls are open 7 AM to 7 PM. Although we don't have a race, we still want to encourage voters to get out there. We will have one vacancy for Ward Four Council Representative, and we have a council expression of interest form that can be picked up at City Hall or downloaded from the city's website or Facebook pages if you or anyone you know is interested. Ideally, we will appoint a Ward Four Alderman at the 7-1 council meeting. Um, as a heads up, during the next meeting, you'll be presented with the first contingency transfer resolution and the first supplemental appropriation ordinance for 2024. As we discussed earlier, contingency is budget authority that's already been approved, but you can't spend directly out of it. So a transfer to a general fund expense only is done by resolution. And then supplemental appropriations are additions to the budget. So they require either the utilization of reserve funds, which we call cash on hand or unassigned balances, or they're the result of added or unplanned revenue like grants, donations, or insurance money. We've been seeing a lot of those the last couple of years. You may also be asked to approve the annual budgeted operating transfers from Water, Wastewater, and Solid Waste to the general fund. I give you an update on the work that's been done on the 2025 budget, so we just get to finish 2023 with our audit report today and we're frantically working on getting some stuff proposed for the 2025 budget. There's a lot that goes into the preparation and we're, I'd say about 75% of the way through in the Finance Department, estimating the recurring expenses like wages, payroll taxes, retirement, workers' comp, group insurance, debt payments, propane, electricity, cellphones, those things that don't change very much. And then what happens to those spreadsheets is we share them with the city administrator and the department heads of each fund or, um, department in the general fund. And then the city administrator and the department heads will get together and fill out the rest of the worksheets with the things that they need or want throughout the year. Then we review the entire budget and in July, the new council will get to determine dates for our 2025 budget meetings. At this time, the preferred dates are 7:30 and 8:01. That's a Tuesday and a Thursday. The meetings typically start at 5 PM and they can last several hours. If needed, we will have time to plan for additional meetings and still complete the budget by the deadline of the first meeting in September. And although the meetings are open to the public for the sake of time, we don't invite departments or organizations to come and make requests of the city during these meetings. Let me know if you have any questions or concerns about the process or the progress or the dates that are going to be proposed. I'd like you to know that Ariel and I will be out of the office at the SDML Human Resource and Finance Officer School. She'll be out June 11th through the 14th, and I'll be out the 12th through the 14th. And then also both to budget training on Wednesday, June 18th. That's also a municipal league offering. Although it can be difficult to be out of the office, the time spent in these trainings and schools is so valuable and we appreciate the opportunity to attend and grow our knowledge, skills, and abilities around these tasks. I have sent nine ordinance revisions to American Legal to have them updated and our codified ordinances. I list out what those nine are in case you forget. Uh, that process with American Legal takes a couple of months and it bears a pretty significant cost. The current updates are estimated about $3,600 and that's why we pool them together in a year and then send them over just because it is quite a process for them to get it updated. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Misty. With that, unless someone feels a huge need for an executive session, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Yay.